September tenth, 2024 meeting of the St. Joseph County Council is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Fig tonight, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our God and our heavenly Father, once again, we come before you to bring the county's business. We ask your blessing upon it. Help us to look at these things and make decisions best for the citizens of St. Joe County. We thank how you take care of us and how you do watch over us. In Jesus' name. Amen.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Tandray.
Respect the request. A moment of silence. I know we're a day ahead of September eleventh, but Patriot Day is tomorrow in remembrance of the 2,977 lives that were lost here in America as a result of the terrorist attacks, the largest domestic terrorism incident in our country. We just offer a moment of silence. Think we'd be appropriate?
We can do that. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. Tandray.
Thank you.
Next up are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion on the August minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
There are second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the August minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The August minutes are approved. Next up are St. Joseph County Board Appointments. We have none tonight. Next up is a report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Next up is a report from the county commissioners.
No report, Mr. President.
And next up is a report from any council special committee. Seeing none, we will move to first readings. Mr. Murphy, will you please read our first bill?
Bill number ninety-eight dash twenty-four, ordnance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen land usage, Chapter One Fifty-four, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at unaddressed approximately forty acres at the southeast corner of State Road Two and Strawberry Road west of and abutting three-oh-two-nine-four State Road Two from A agricultural district to C commercial district. Petitioner, SR2 Echo Develop LLC.
Bill number ninety-eight dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number ninety-nine dash twenty-four, ordnance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen land usage, Chapter One Fifty-four, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at two-five-six-nine-eight State Road Two Highway from C commercial and R residential district to C commercial district. Petitioner, South Bend Speedway LLC.
Bill number ninety-nine dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number one-hundred dash twenty-four, ordinance approving the petition for specialty use filed by South Bend Motor Speedway LLC to allow an auto wrecking yard per section one-five-four point dash one-eight-one, property located at two-five-six-nine-eight State Road Two Highway. Petitioner, South Bend Motor Speedway LLC.
Bill number one-hundred dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number one-oh-one dash twenty-four, ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council authorizing the issuance of county's economic development tax increment revenue bonds in one or more series related to projects to be located at the northern edge economic development area. The provision of the proceeds thereof to B CND Douglas Road Partners LLC or an affiliate thereof in approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Petitioner, infrastructure, planning, and growth.
Bill number one-oh-one dash twenty-four is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes our first reading for tonight. Next up is first readings and public hearing only on the solid waste management, the airport authority, and St. Joseph County 2025 budgets. Mr. Murphy, will you please read the first one?
Bill number ninety-three dash twenty-four, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Budget Form Four, Solid Waste.
First one is ninety-three twenty-four, solid waste. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please come forward. You have three minutes to address the council. Please give us your name and address for the record. Anyone who would speak in favor of solid waste? Is there anyone online who wish to speak in favor of the solid waste budget? Seeing no one, we'll now move on to, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to the solid waste budget? Is there anyone online who does speak in opposition to the solid waste budget? Seeing none, the public hearing on bill number ninety-three dash twenty-four is now closed. We'll move on to bill number twenty, ninety-four dash twenty-four.
Bill ninety-four dash twenty-four, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Budget Form Four, Airport Authority.
Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of bill ninety-four dash twenty-four? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Mike Dagel, CEO/Executive Director, South Bend International Airport, forty-four seventy-seven Progress Drive. As many of you know, we continue to see the hard work and diligence by the South Bend team in continuing to promote better service for our community. Out of the five commercial air service airports in Indiana, only two of them will have five airlines serving them, Indianapolis and South Bend. Our newest addition, as many of you know, is Breeze Airlines, providing service starting in October to two different markets. And then, we are also discussing with them and other airlines new additional routes and enhanced services, again, to benefit our community. As passenger travel continues to rebound, we are seeing double-digit percentage increases in 2024, and we are hearing from the airlines of increased capacity and number of seats being added in 2025. As I stated last year, we're still seeing some escalation on the rising, raising costs of prices for materials and contracts that we have. That is not a surprise to anybody at this point. However, we are still committed to making the necessary improvements to the facilities and services to serve the traveling public in our community. As you can see in the proposed 2025 expense budget worksheet, our expense budget, as usual, is divided into two categories, operating, non-operating. Operating is what allows us to work twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five days a year. The non-operating is where the majority of the expenses are for major improvements or capital. These could be the purchases of new equipment, or increases to building capacity, paved surfaces, fuel facilities, or other major developments. Our total expense budget for twenty-five, 2025, is just over seventy-one point seven-five million, with over fifty million of that going into the non-operating budget for improvements. We learned just late last week that the airport receive, will receive in 2025 eighteen point seven-five million from the federal airport improvement aid project, the largest grant to come to the state of Indiana. Our total expense budget for 2025 is increasing by one point eight percent. So, again, the team has done a good job in controlling prices. We are also working with all of our tenants and service providers to continue to make improvements on all of the services that are provided. This, again, just serves to help make our community better connected. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Dagel? Seeing none. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone in the room wish to speak in opposition? Anyone online wish to speak in opposition? Public hearing on bill number ninety-four dash twenty-four is now closed. Bill number ninety-five dash twenty-four?
Bill number ninety-five dash twenty-four, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Budget Form Four, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Mr. Murphy, you want to give us a brief synopsis?
We have a brief PowerPoint. Is that okay if we go ahead and present that?
I think we have it here.
Yeah. So, we'll also have it on the screen. Abby and I are going to present it to you.
So, Jenny, you can, you know, drive the slides? Oh, you have the clicker. Okay. Go ahead, Abby.
Okay. Just a brief presentation. The history, we had our budget kickoff meeting on May eighth. Actually, it started for our office two months earlier, where Abby and Katie Bishop had to prepare the summary forms that department used. So, we've actually been working on the budget since March. Minimums, four percent salary increases for employees was what was sent with the budget letter. Increasing health insurance allocation to eighteen thousand five hundred. As you know, we had a higher amount. We backed off on that a little bit to give some departments some relief. It hit, we hit them pretty hard with that allocation and some other allocations. So, we've backed off on that to eighteen thousand five hundred. We think we can break even. Liability insurance allocation, fleet and fuel is a new fund during the year for 2025. The public hearing is tonight, September tenth. The budget adoption is October eighth. So, we have time to finalize the budget. If the audience, we're not quite done with the budget. We've made a lot of headway, but we're not done. The state deadline for budget approval is November first. So, we're in good shape there. Next page is revenue. Just quickly, property taxes is the largest revenue source, sixty-seven million countywide. We've kind of checked with Mr. Dalton on property tax estimates. We've kind of used each other and kind of the sounding board on that. So, we feel pretty comfortable with that. The local income tax is estimated forty-seven point one million dollars. That's actually a reduction of about nine percent from the twenty-twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-four certified amount. So, that was a little bit of a surprise that we're working through. The other large item is the charges and fees. That includes the health insurance fees we charge back to departments, solid waste, and some other fees. State grants is another important one. That's fourteen point nine million dollars. The largest grant there is the Health First Indiana Grant for the Health Department. That's six point three million dollars for 2025. So, that's kind of the total revenue is two-hundred-and-twenty-eight million eight eighty-seven. So, next.
This is the, for all funds budgeted so far, and the expenditures. So far, we have two-hundred-and-forty million, close to two-hundred-and-forty-one, and we broke this out by function. So, as you can see here, our biggest one is public safety, along with public works and law and courts and general government. Public safety coming in at fifty-five million, and public works at thirty-three million. The next slide is just the same information, just formatted differently by type. So, what we did is we're showing you here that our salaries and wages is a huge portion of our expenditures at seventy-five million, close to seventy-six. Coming in next would be other expenditures. Other expenditures, a big portion of that is eleven million of being hotel-motel. So, keep that in mind. Also, supplies and some other operating expenses in there. But then you also have health insurance and internal services. Internal services would be your, your health insurance and liability. Thank you.
All right. So, we're switching back and forth a little bit. This is just the general fund itself. That's our most important fund. It's a large, large fund. Property taxes in the general fund are estimated fifty-one million dollars. The property tax amount collected is limited by what's called the growth quotient. So, the growth quotient for 2025 is four percent. So, generally speaking, property tax revenue can't be increased more than four percent from one year to the next. That's what that is designed to do. Local income taxes in the general fund is also imported at eleven million dollars. We have interest earnings. We had a lot of discussions about that during the budget meeting. So far, we've estimated ten point three million dollars. That's kind of a halfway point between what the county treasurer estimated that it could be and what we had originally budgeted. So, it's hard to tell what interest earnings are going to be. Inner fund transfers include five-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars received from the JJC Rental Income Fund, and also the county clerk pays a small amount for one position, about forty-five thousand. General fund budget, budget expenditures by type. Is that what we're looking at? Okay. Sorry. So, that's fifty million dollars in the general fund. So, that's more than half of the cost. You can see that. Health insurance is another large portion of the cost. The general fund is mainly, primarily employees in the general fund. Not a lot of capital is spent out of the general fund. So, those are the biggest items in that. Also in the general fund, up at the top, is what's called the mental health levy. It's kind of a levy within a levy. It's some dedicated money of the general fund that has to be used for mental health services, and primarily it's paid to Beacon Health Services and Oaklawn. So, there you see most of the budgeted expenditures. Next, next slide. And this is by function. Again, like Abby said, public safety is the largest portion of the general fund. That includes police, jail, EMA, and coroner. That's who we've classified as public safety. The general government is most of your constitutional offices, like the council, commissioners, auditor, treasurer, assessor, and so forth. Law and courts, obviously, that's the prosecutor in the superior courts, and adult probation, and those kinds of things. So, that's the breakout by function. What we do is we classify, it's called a crosswalk. We classify it by type, which is salaries or supplies. We also classify the same expenditures by function. So, it kind of gives you two looks at the same information. On page eight, then, is the trends in the general fund. And we have been fortunately able to increase spending in the general fund, just because revenue, primarily local income tax and property taxes, have increased a little bit in the last few years. In 2022, the increase was two point two percent. So, that's fairly modest. But in 2023, it was six point four percent, and last year, in 2024, it's six point seven percent. We're currently at six point one percent increase, but I know we're trying to reduce that amount as a council and commissioners. And the rest is just really for your information. It's summaries that you've seen before, so I won't go into all of that. Any questions on the county budget?
Any question from the council, from Mr. Murphy?
Go ahead, Mark.
This is on our Abby's section. Maybe not a question, just maybe more for the benefit of the audience, both here and there, about the hotel-motel expenditure of eleven million dollars.
Go ahead.
It'd be good to show, though, on the revenue side, they generate that eleven million dollars.
Yeah. It's money they generate themselves. So, it's not, it's not coming out of property taxes or anything like that. They, they generate what's called innkeeper's tax, and that's eight percent of the hotel stay is charged. So, that has increased in recent years. It dipped during COVID, but it really has bounced back dramatically. We're a pretty good tourism county with youth sports and so forth. So, it's their, it's their own money. We're just really the custodians for that money.
I just wanted the public to be aware of that. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions from the council? Hearing none. Let's move to the public hearing on St. Joseph County budget. Anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Tom Row, two-six-one-six-zero, Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-nine. It's not necessarily an opposition. I just wanted clarification. When I see probate court, I see detention officer, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Okay? I ask whether that's for one probation, detention officer? Okay. And then there was another item that was, I believe it was home detention officer, forty-five thousand. That's more understandable. Can I receive any clarification in regard to those, especially the one for a hundred and ten thousand, whether it's one or two?
We could meet after the meeting, and we could go through that with you, if you'd like.
Sir? Sir? Did you hear, did you hear our county auditor on your request?
We can meet after the meeting. I'm sure that detention officer is more than one person.
It's in the budget bill. It's in the appropriation bill. It's a transfer.
Oh, okay.
That's not one sound.
It's not part of the budget. It's part of a transfer in the appropriation bill.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? The public hearing on ninety-five dash twenty-four is now closed. We'll move to ninety-six dash twenty-four.
Bill number ninety-six dash twenty-four, ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County Council, County Council, Indiana, for the year 2025. No further comments. We do an interesting thing in our county. We include the salary ordinance as part of the budget, which is kind of, kind of a good way to do it. So, we've already discussed this.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of ninety-six dash twenty-four in the room? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of ninety-six dash twenty-four? Seeing no one. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none. The public hearing on bill number ninety-six dash twenty-four is now closed. That concludes our first reading and public hearing on solid waste management, Airport Authority, and St. Joseph County 2025 budget. Next up are resolutions. Mr. Murphy, will you please read bill number ninety-seven dash twenty-four?
Bill number ninety-seven dash twenty-four, resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving the 2025 budget submitted by Liberty Township.
I'm Sue Ditmar. I'm the Liberty Township trustee, and I'm here this evening to ask you to approve our proposed budget for 2025. I will tell you it's basically a four percent increase, which is what the growth quotient was for twenty-five. We, there are some areas that we've used every bit of that, or will use every bit of that increase. By going to a paid service, things will cost more. We'll have more in salaries and wages than we've had, not salaries, wages that we've had before, and just other expenses in general. However, I will tell you that it's going very well for our community. We're very happy to have people that are there when the call is needed. They get in the ambulance and go immediately. It's, it's very beneficial. So, I feel that the money that we are investing in our community is well-spent.
Mr. President, if I could, Steve Dalton, financial advisor to both the county and Liberty Township. You don't need to do a public hearing, because Liberty Township's board already conducted their public hearing. So, we're only asking that you adopt this budget with your action tonight.
Thank you. In that case, we will move to a vote on ninety-seven dash twenty-four. Is there a motion on ninety-seven dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made by Mr. Fig, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I would just like to mention that your fire department, my sister lives in Liberty Township, and they had a bonfire, and they didn't have a problem with it, but a neighbor apparently thought they had a problem with it. But I want to say the firemen were very professional. Tom McCormick is an awesome citizen in our county, and they just did a, you know, they're very understanding and also professional. So, I really appreciate them. I wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. I'll say that with them.
Any further council comment? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tansright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number ninety-seven dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next up are two companion bills on the same subject. So, we will have a reading on both ninety-two twenty-four and one-oh-two twenty-four. Mr. Murphy?
Bill number ninety-two dash twenty-four, resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Mishawaka Penn-Harris Public Library. Petitioner, Mishawaka Penn-Harris Public Library. Bill number one-oh-two dash twenty-four, resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Mishawaka Penn-Harris Public Library B. Petitioner, Mishawaka Penn-Harris Public Library.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. President, council members, good evening. My name is Joel Dendu. I'm an attorney and represent the Mishawaka Penn-Harris Public Library. I'm here with Mr. Sean McGill from Baker Tilly. Thank you for the opportunity to present the library's proposal for a four-point-two million dollar general obligation bond. I'm going to provide a brief overview and then turn it over to some of my colleagues if any additional in-depth information is needed. The library is proud to serve our community through three full-service locations: downtown Mishawaka, the Bittersweet Branch, and the Harris Branch in the Granger Community. These three sites form the backbone of our library system, and we serve a diverse range of needs for residents across the Mishawaka, Penn Township, and Harris Township. While the library provides comprehensive collections of print and digital materials, we are no longer just book depositories. Libraries today are centers for learning, community engagement, and support services. Our facilities are used as gathering places for community programs, business meetings, and events for people of all ages, backgrounds, and interests. We serve as a vital resource for many important activities, including meeting and study rooms, wireless internet access, service club, and other support group meetings, free legal assistance services, book clubs and guest speakers, computer and technology training, and historical, current events, and genealogy programs, just to name a few. Our most intensive services are geared towards our children and young adults. We offer programs that introduce them to reading, music, and the arts, spark their interest in history and science, build their self-esteem through age-appropriate activities, and provide academic and social resources for homeschooled children. Our libraries have transformed. They are no longer quiet, dusty places. They're now bustling marketplaces of ideas, activities, and civic engagement. Because of this, we are dedicated to preserving the public's multimillion-dollar investment in these facilities, ensuring that those facilities are safe, comfortable, inviting, and up-to-date. The primary purpose of this bond is to address critical facility upgrades and improvements. At a very general level, some of the proposed projects include roof replacement at the Mishawaka Branch, roof replacement at the Bittersweet Branch, lighting upgrades, HVAC upgrades, and building a garage in order to house vehicles that the library already owns, as well as a bookmobile that is currently on order. These upgrades are essential. Many of our current systems and infrastructures have surpassed their natural life expectancy, and continued patchwork repairs are no longer cost-effective. Replacing outdated equipment and facility components will not only enable us to better service the public, but also to safeguard the public's investment in these facilities. Despite the library having engaged in numerous cost-saving measures throughout the years, we do not have the funds to cover the costs of these necessary upgrades. We are here to respectfully ask for your approval. On a personal note, my family of six, which includes my spouse, my three school-age children, and a high school foreign exchange student from Thailand, are all patrons of the library. Two Saturdays ago, my spouse and I attended the library's book club. Every evening, my children check out books digitally from the library. Once a month, those same children attend youth cooking classes at the Mishawaka Branch, and our foreign exchange student, who has only been with us for a month, has already enjoyed DVDs from the library. It truly is a treasure to all members of our community, no matter their age or background, and we respectfully request that you invest in that treasure. Thank you for your consideration, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Does the other gentleman wish to speak?
I would just point out that before the council this evening, our two resolutions, and I can spend a moment discussing the differences between the two. The first bill under consideration is ninety-two dash twenty-four. That would be the library's preferred route. This financing features a maximum borrowing amount of four-point-two million dollars, repaid over a period of approximately fifteen years. What the general financing plan behind this would be is to incur a small tax rate increase in 2025. in 2025 as a means of setting the library up in a position to revisit the needs of its facilities every five years, and at those five-year intervals, have an opportunity to issue another bond that, in all likelihood, could be issued as tax rate neutral, so that the next time the library is before this council, it's not asking for an additional rate increase, it's simply asking for the authority to issue, or approval to issue bonds. Not only would that perhaps set the library up to to fund the needs of its facilities as they arise at a potentially tax rate-neutral financing, but at the same time, that repayment structure features higher payments on the front end as opposed to the back, which means paying principal earlier, which means relative to a essentially flat repayment structure, you save approximately $720,000 of interest, or the taxpayers do. The second resolution, of course, would assume that the library does not, issues the bonds in a means that does not impact their debt service tax rate or increase it from current levels. So, happy to dive into details. I have presentations, if you'd care to review those, I think you have those, but if there's anything you'd like to discuss or any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for the representatives from the library?
I have a question, President Root. Could you explain a little better, dig into that 720,000 in interest saved? Exactly what does that mean?
So, over the life of the bond, if you, if you think about your, your mortgage, let's put it into terms that you and I can understand. If you think about your mortgage, your payments over the life of the mortgage are relatively the same, they may increase because of taxes here and there, but essentially, they're structured such that your principal, when added to the amount of interest, which decreases over time as you pay back principal, principal plus interest equals level payments throughout the life of the borrowing. So, if we are able to essentially structure higher payments in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that means that we're not only paying interest, we're also able to pay back some of the principal that we've borrowed. And in doing so, we no longer have 4.2 million dollars outstanding for, say, four, five, six years without any of it being repaid. We're able to pay down some of that principal, which reduces interest cost relative to the other scenario.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Sean, what I'm hearing is that, and this is also based off of previous discussion during council committee.
Yes.
Is that this option A, structuring to the preferred method in resolution or bill number ninety-two twenty-four?
Yes.
Gives you capacity to bond again in the future for any other needs that may arise for the library?
Correct.
With potentially no additional impact to the tax rate or to the taxpayer.
That's correct. We've essentially created stair steps down in the level of payment every five years, such that the library, you know, assuming that over the life of a fifteen-year bond, something else is going to need to be funded. So, we can intuitively arrive at the assumption that if we structure flat payments for fifteen years, something goes wrong within those fifteen years, we'll be back in front of a council such as yourselves requesting a tax rate increase of some sort. Whereas if we were to, say, approve this less than half a penny rate increase, which I think on a $300,000 property with no homestead deductions equates to $13.50 a year, or as it was said at the last meeting, two lattes, that would, that would set the library up such that they can, they can every five years revisit the needs of their facilities, issue a bond that fits within that, that step-down structure, one very similar to what we're requesting today, somewhere in the, you know, two to four million dollar range at a ten to fifteen-year repayment level. That would all fit in very nicely with the structure that we've, we've preliminary set up.
And that would result if no capital needs were present five years out?
If no capital-
And it would result in a tax reduction?
Of course, yes.
And if we were to decline option A, the preferred option of the library, and go with option B, that is basically paying interest upfront and principal on the back end, similar to a typical mortgage?
Correct.
That if a capital need arose at any point in time, over, I think, fifteen years?
Yes.
That you wouldn't have any other option but to come to us and to present a bond option that, without a doubt, increases the tax rate?
That's correct, and at that time, we, of course, would most likely present you with a structure that would have a minimal tax increase, which means years and years and years of interest-only payments, which just creates an inefficient borrowing from a, from a economic standpoint.
Any other council questions or comments?
I'm thinking. Can I have a moment? Thank you. Why, and maybe I'm just not getting this, but if we went for the second option, is there a possibility to structure that so that you're paying more capital, or more of the actual, less interest upfront and more of the principal? I mean, I'm not understanding quite why you can't structure the second one in a similar way.
Because of the tax rate.
Because of the tax rate?
Correct. Without, without increasing the tax rate, we're, we're essentially limited to either interest only, or, you know, maybe we can fit in $25,000 here or there of principal, but, but nothing, nothing significant or material.
So you need the tax rate to go up in order to be able to pay more principal upfront?
That's correct, sir.
That's why, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we're looking at, I won't call it a negligible because that's, that's dishonest to people who are on a fixed income.
Of course.
But a, a small tax increase to those who live not through the whole county, but through the Penn Harris district, which is covered by the services provided by Mishawaka Penn Harris Library, correct? So, we're not talking about the whole county, we're talking about those who live within the boundaries of this entity that are served in these townships, correct?
That's correct. I think Madison is in there as well? Or no, 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 I'm sorry.
Madison, to my knowledge, is not served by any-
I'm sorry, I'm getting my units mixed up.
No, that's okay. I, I actually, years and years ago, I had a resident of Madison Township wonder why they weren't served, but it's-
Oh, okay.
Their township's choice and their vote that dictated that they weren't served. So, but, but my, my question is, so those individuals in tho, in that specific service area, who are not homestead-exempted and own a property of, let's say the example you used was $300,000, would have an impact of $13.50?
A year.
For, a year. For those who do have a homestead exemption or have a property of less value than that, there's less impact.
Significantly.
And then for those who are already at the residential homestead 1% tax cap?
Yes.
They see zero impact because they're already at that state-mandated maximum, aside from maybe a school referendum or something else, that the public through referenda has increased whatever the tax base is, correct?
That's accurate, yes.
So, so it's not everybody in the county, it's not even everybody in Penn or Harris townships, and for those who live in Penn and Harris townships who may be impacted, it's somewhat variable based on the valuation of their, the assessed valuation of their property, and to a certain degree, their capacity to use these resources as well. And the side benefit of it is you have future bonding capacity in years six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and so on, and the taxpayers ultimately save a little over $700,000 in interest?
Correct, based on the rate assumptions baked into our analysis, yes.
And then lastly, I believe that it was, the council as an entity, the county as a whole, who a few years ago, or a couple years ago, determined a shift in the funding mechanism for our 911 dispatch P S A P center, that ultimately, it didn't necessarily defund the libraries, but different taxing entities in the county, such as our libraries, actually saw a reduction in revenue that they would have traditionally received. And in our council committee discussion, that was in the, to the tune of around $160,000 a year reduction, or, yeah, yeah, I got a, I got a thumbs up from the back of the room. Okay. Two hundred, and, okay. So, so even a little bit more, it was a, it was a reduction, and it, I believe, even with this bonding capacity of option A, it's still net less than what the library was receiving in revenue prior to that reduction. I'm, I'm regurgitating some information with some generalities, but is that match your basic understanding?
From a dollars and cents point of view, yes, of course, there's the caveat that local governments have different buckets of money dedicated to different. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, we may have induced a need for the bonding capacity by reducing the revenue that the library even had to work with?
By reducing the revenue that the library received on an annual basis, you certainly didn't help things.
Thank you.
I have a couple more questions.
Yes, Root?
Mr. Shetzel?
Can you clarify the boundaries of the library district for me, just a little more, please?
I believe, I'm going to call up Eric Mims from the library.
Good evening, my name's Eric Mims. I'm the comptroller at the Mishawaka Penn Harris Public Library. Thank you for your time tonight. Our library serves two townships. We serve Penn and Harris Townships, which includes most of the city of Mishawaka, as well as most of Granger, but it is bound by those township borders.
Okay, thank you. And then just a slight correction, I know this is kind of off the subject, but in that scenario that Mr. Tanner gave, if the school districts, whichever, if it were Penn or Mishawaka, whichever school district someone's in, if we approved this second one, or the first one, and someone had a one, whereas they were at the 1% cap, your bond wouldn't be able to push them through the cap, but schools can pierce the cap. So in that case, not because of your bond, but if a school decided to go ahead and bond, people could see, they could see their tax rate go above the 1% in the scenario that Mr. Tanner presented. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, just so if that happens, people aren't shocked.
That would have to be voter-approved.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Which happened recently in Mishawaka, has not happened recently, I think, in Penn Harris, Madison.
That's correct, yeah.
But the city, school city of Mishawaka did pass a tax increase outside of the cap.
Right, and South Bend has done the same thing, so, which of course doesn't apply here, but just another example. One more question. So, if we chose the second option, would the major needs that you have listed still be met next year? The things, those seven things that you say you need to get done, would you still be able to get those things done next year?
Yeah, with option two, so both bonds were asking for the same amount, so those, either option will be able to fund the projects that we've identified. Again, like we said, does that mean in the next fifteen years?
Right.
More projects won't come up, you know?
So what we're doing is taking a risk that in the next fifteen years, nothing will come up?
Exactly.
That's the risk we're taking. Something may come up, we're taking that risk that, and betting that nothing will come up in the next fifteen years.
Exactly, and now I did want to point out our debt service, and again, maybe this is important, maybe not, but in 2019, the debt service tax rate was .027, and so we're calling this in-house, we're calling this kind of a reset, because over our last three bonds, the tax rates, our debt service tax rate has continued to fall as we've kept our levy the same, or less, much less than 2019. So, while we are asking for a small increase, it isn't even going to get us back to our level at 2019, so I think we all know everything is far more expensive now than it was in 2019, so our ability to issue debt is much less than it was even five years ago. So while we are asking for a small increase in option A, it won't even get us back to our 2019 debt levels.
With the increase in option A, what would the rate be then?
So, understanding that 2025's assessed values have not yet been certified, we're estimating a maximum debt service tax rate in 2025 through 2029, when that first step-down would occur in 2030, of 1.84 cents. That represents an increase of .45 cents.
I'm trying to compare it to the .027 you gave me for 2019.
Yes.
So what would that number, the comparative number be for 2025?
1.84.
If economic conditions changed, say, in two years, is there anything that would prevent you from taking this bond back out and refinancing it, getting a better rate, and having more of the money go to principal rather than interest?
Not, not within two years, no, no. There'd be potential for maybe ten-year call date, but at the same, we always do an analysis, if you slap a call date or a refinancing provision on a, on a bond issue, you're going to end up paying for it in terms of yield and price that the investors are willing to pay for it. So, we do a pros and cons analysis based upon what that call provision may cost you in terms of bond proceeds or interest costs.
Any further council comments or questions? Mr. Shetzel?
What would you say, what would your best guess be as far as the percentage of homes that are already at the property tax cap that would not be affected? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just-
No, no, that's an excellent question. I apologize, I don't have that information with me, but I'd be more than happy to follow up with you.
Mr. Dalton, would you have an idea?
And to add on to that question, are we looking at more in Mishawaka or Granger?
Anybody in the city of Mishawaka is already at the cap because the rates are higher in Mishawaka. I don't know in Granger, some people would be and some people would not. Sadly, the smaller homes typically are the ones that have not hit cap yet. The larger homes typically have.
You just said, I want to make sure I'm understanding you. You're saying all homes in Mishawaka have already hit the cap?
Yeah, the tax rate's high enough, I can guess that every home there is going to be already at the cap, not see any tax increase, no matter what you do today.
I mean, that, to me, that's a pretty significant factor. Wouldn't you agree?
Yep.
So, who is your estimate on who is going to pay this tax? The people outside of Mishawaka?
Some small homes outside of Mishawaka, and all businesses that are at the 3% that may, are going to see the increase. And you'll see some circuit breaker moving around. We always talk about this when we're talking about us issuing debt. So, if, if everybody's capped out, then there'd be some circuit breaker pushed around.
And then what, money coming from the school and other places?
Yeah. Little bit here, a little bit there. It's not, it's not a big amount, because you're not, your debt service isn't a gigantic amount on a fifteen-year bond.
The day and the day, we all share the same pie.
We're all sharing, we're connected at the hip.
And you, would you say that the Mishawaka folks being mostly already at the cap is probably because of the school bonds have pushed them there?
No, because when you're in a city, when you're in a municipality, you already are taking on more tax rate than those outside of the municipality.
Sure, okay.
Any further questions from the council?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Dalton, so on that, I'm hung up on the principal and the interest. I know, is that statutorily, they can't put any more money towards the principal? I know they're locked into the interest rate, right?
No, this is really a financial thing, Joe. What's happening is, at the beginning of your mortgage, like we were talking about the mortgage, you're paying almost nothing in principal-
Right.
-because everything is interest. And it's the same when you do a bond, you have to amortize level payments, and so at the beginning, you're paying hardly any principal. Later on, at the very end, you're paying almost all principal. It's just, it's the financial calculation of an amortization.
Let me make sure, I'm sorry. Let me make, make sure-
Let's go to Mr. Fig.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If the Fed cuts the rate, I guess it's for you, for anybody here, the Fed cuts the rate next week, or in two weeks, whatever they're talking about, could they get a better deal on, on option B then?
I'd, I'd rather have Sean answer their modeling for rates, because I'm not sure what he's modeled.
And you got it-
He may have already modeled the Fed cuts, I'm not sure what he's already put in his modeling.
But I want to ask you, do you know are they going to cut the rates?
They're going to cut the rates.
So, if you're talking about bond pricing, underwriters are fantastic about pricing in anticipated movements, so wouldn't anticipate a crazy bottom movement, once the Fed actually does, a lot of that action is already priced in. If we're talking specifically about the numbers I've baked into our presentations, those are based upon what I'll refer to as the worst-case scenario. In Indiana, we have to put maximum parameters that are included in the authorizing resolutions that go through the library board. One of those parameters is a maximum interest rate. We've set that at 5%, so that's what the numbers you're looking at now represent, is that 5% interest rate or worst-case scenario.
So you don't have an amount for us if they drop it a quarter of a percent?
No, I don't.
Okay, and that's, that's a hard question to answer.
Mr. Fig, can I clarify one piece that I didn't answer for you, and I'm going to ask Sean the question?
Okay.
Sean, do you think in your mind there'd be a difference- Sean, do you think in your mind there'd be a difference between the pricing we would get on A versus the pricing we would get on B?
Absolutely.
Why?
Especially because you're seeing, I mean, the yield curve has really been flattened, unfortunately. It's starting to kind of correct itself, but what that means is that the lower interest rates that we were able to capture right during COVID simply aren't there, that what you're seeing in year one, two, three, four, five are all really flat in terms of an interest rate level, and then things start to normalize, which means that time value of money, the longer money, principal's outstanding, the higher the interest rate you should pay for that. That's intuitive. That makes sense. There's risk involved in time. So, when we're talking about backloading a bond or putting all of that principal on the back end, yes, absolutely, those costs are going to be higher than if we were able to capture, even though they're flat, not as appetizing or enticing as they used to be. Absolutely, I do think we would see price improvement on scenario A versus B.
I would agree.
Any further, Mr. Shetzel?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dalton, I want to ask you real quick.
You know, this is their deal, right?
Yeah. Sorry about that. So, we were talking about Mishawaka and Granger, and you said that you thought it would be the, maybe the lower-value homes.
Some lower-value homes may not have hit cap yet.
And then the businesses?
Yeah.
That would probably pay the bulk of this, right?
Sure.
Would that change the assessment that a business that has, well, let's put it this way. So, we kind of talked about how it would affect a homeowner, right? We said if someone with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home that didn't have a homeowner's exemption, we're talking about thirteen dollars and some odd cents a year. What about a business? What's that going to cost a business?
Well, it's the same, right?
Yeah.
Same number. It's the same calculation.
So, the property value is three-hundred-thousand dollars that the business is in, they're going to pay?
Right.
Although they pay higher, but it's not going to matter. Their cap's higher, but it won't matter. They'll still pay the thirteen.
Their tax rate is the same.
The tax rate will stay the same.
The calculation is the same.
So, a business would pay the equivalent, yeah, thirteen dollars.
And some landlords, too. You know, the two percent cap landlords would probably pay some more, too, if they're at that low a tax rate and they haven't hit the two percent cap.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Let's move to the public hearing on Bills ninety-two, twenty-four, and one oh-two, twenty-four. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of either Plan A or Plan B?
Are you asking for a public hearing on these resolutions?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that when you have a tax increase on the table, the public has a right to comment.
There you go.
Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of either ninety-two, twenty-four, or one oh-two, dash, twenty-four? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of either Plan A or Plan B? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to either ninety-two, twenty-four, or one oh-two, twenty-four? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bills ninety-two, dash, twenty-four, and Bill number one oh-two, dash, twenty-four are now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please, Mr. Fig?
Mr. Root, I'd like to take a five-minute break if that's possible.
Yep. You'd like to what?
I would like to take a five-minute break if that's possible.
Is council agreeable to a five-minute recess?
I'll second this motion.
The council will reconvene at seven o'clock. We stand in recess.
Thank you.